It's 7:02, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Luesbrunz. Clerk Slater, please call the role.
Trusty North Hook.
Here.
Trusty McDonald.
Here.
And President Luesbrunz.
Here.
President Karsdage.
Yeah.
Trusty Kessel.
Here.
Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater, here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have one presentation this evening. We welcome Mr. Scott Alsgard from the Hope Network. Most of you know that the township entered into an agreement with the Hope Network to provide transportation along 28th Street, beginning the end of August after the negotiations with the Rapid Run successful. Mr. Alsgard and his colleagues worked hard to make sure that the service was up and running as soon as the Rapid ended its service, so there was no disruption to riders. Tonight, he will give the board an update and answer any questions that trustees may have. Mr. Alsgard, thank you for being here and please proceed with your update. Thank you.
First, I want to commend you on getting my name right. Nobody ever gets my name.
I spelled it wrong to pronounce it right.
Phonetics.
Yes, that's the word.
First of all, I'm glad to be here and if I have a time limit, you're going to have to throw something at me because I tend to blather, so stop me when you need me.
You missed a timer on you.
We've been real happy with how things have gone. You know, we of course had some hiccups at the beginning. We had really low ridership like the first couple of weeks, but we got almost a couple of months under our belt. And depending on your perspective as to what good ridership is, I don't know if everybody has the latest information or not, but I don't know, so like a week left in October. So basically for three weeks, we've had a total of 107 riders. That is, since we're not differentiating, that is including, originally we were just going to do employers, employees. Ted really wanted shoppers, but there's, we're not, since we're not taking down names or IDs or asking what they're riding the bus for, we don't know what the mix is between shoppers and employees. One of the, I don't remember if I had mentioned this in the past or not, but unfortunately between the time the Rapid announced and that we got together to formulate our plan, a high majority, and I heard this from the store directors at Walmart and Meyer, a high number of employees transferred to other stores that still had rapid service. So I think that that cost us some riders. We have the same, we have basically three, it's just the way that it worked out with our CDL drivers because we need a CDL driver to drive the bus. We have six to 10, and then we start back up again from one to seven, and then right now we're doing seven to 10. So we've got, we've had the three same drivers on it since we started. And again, if you look at it, the obvious, the biggest bulk of ridership is during the day. The, the next one is not as bad, but that, that last leg in the last three weeks has had five riders. So, you know, we have been really looking at the, at the data. I have a lot of ideas. I'm not, I'll discuss my potential recommendations. I'm not ready to make any yet because we're still doing some legwork on our side. But one of the things that I did was the Cascade Center, the two strip malls that are right there. I don't know if I got that, the name right. I always screw the name up. But I went through all of there and talked to all of the businesses and said, would it be useful or would it benefit you if we were to stop here? And I thought the manager at Subway was going to hug me. So Teddy's, it's, if we stop, we're going to stop somewhere in the middle. So it's maybe a five minute walk either way because you've got Teddy's. I talked to the, the director, store director, or whatever they're called at Teddy's. He said, he's been involved in the process and was aware of it. And he said, I absolutely think it would benefit us. Taco Bell said, I'm dying for people to get them here. Yeah, Freddy's and Taco Bell, right? What did I say? Teddy's?
Yeah, but yeah, that makes sense.
Say cheese cards, we know what you mean.
I, I'm sure I've done that since they opened. I used to take my daughter there when she was younger, but and the, and the Subway manager got lucky, was able to talk to managers so that he definitely thinks he would benefit from it. One of the other things I did was I had gotten a phone call and forgive me, her last name is escaping me and her card is on my desk at home. Abby, who I believe is Director of Participant Services or something like that at the YMCA, she'd actually called me, I don't know, three weeks ago, maybe four and maybe three weeks ago and said, look, I think it's great that you guys are coming out here. And when I went and met with her, I saw where her office is, it's floor to ceiling glass. And she says, your bus stops right in front of my office. And she says, I've been watching it since you started every hour stopping there. And she said, no one's getting on and no one's getting off. And I asked her, so I went and met with her. I said, I haven't talked to the board about this yet. We haven't made any decisions or anything, but I wanted to talk to you before we even had the conversation that if we were to eliminate this stop, it would enable us to open that, potentially open that stop at Cascade Center, which, you know, I don't know, maybe we get no riders, but I honestly think we would, we would get a lot of employees and potential shoppers from there. But I said, I don't want to do anything without talking to you first. And she gave me her blessing. She said, no, I, I get it. She says, like I said, I'm watching the buses come and nobody's getting on and off. I don't, I don't want you to waste your time. Since then, I found out we've had one rider that has actually been on it a few times. So I'm actually going to talk to her again in case that rider is like an employee. I kind of want to find out what the, what the situation is. That's why I'm saying these are some of my non-recommendation recommendations. This is kind of what we're kicking around, what we're thinking that we could get some more ridership. One of the other ones is we've had very, very few riders at Costco. We've had very, very few riders at Aldi's. I think almost none. So we want to keep it within that hour to stay within budget. So, you know, that's another thing that we're kicking around. And of course, we wouldn't do a thing without talking to you guys first, is possibly dropping those stops. Because we're just, we're not getting anybody yet. And now we've got, like I said, a couple of months under our belt. You know, I'm hearing from the drivers that are saying, I do want to call out the store director at Meyer. He's been really, really good. He let us put a Hope Network sticker on their bus stop and I have schedules, a slot with schedules in there. I didn't realize the bus stop leaked, so they're all wet. I'm working on that. But, you know, we haven't, if I was to say there was a glitch, it would, not that I'm trying to fuel your fire, it would be the Rapid. We have had instances where the Rapid isn't getting to its stop at the flagpoles on time. People have waited a while. One run said, you know, it was his trip back and the person that he had dropped off an hour earlier was still sitting there. So we've, we've had some of that and they, they try to make notations on that. You know, they're keeping track of all the riders. When they pick them up, at which stop they pick them up, that's where, that's where this data is coming from. But overall, I, I think it's going well. One of the things that surprised me when I was looking at the data is everybody's paying. That was some of our concerns. We're like, we were thinking a lot of people would say, oh, I don't have the three bucks and you know, Ted said, we'll leave them in the curb and that was, would be difficult for us to do. So I'm happy that we didn't have to address that topic because they are, we even have, I think we have one person that's like paying a week at a time. She's paying for the whole week. So we are getting some regular riders that are on there. I think that's, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, it's, it's going well. We haven't had any major hiccups. We've been very fortunate. We haven't had any sick drivers. We do have a CDL backup driver. We, you know, we have not had, I don't know if your phones have been ringing off the hooks, but ours hasn't with, with any complaints regarding the service or, or anything like that. So go ahead.
How is it working with the people that have to call in like the elderly at Gaylord House and some of those people? Are they calling in to schedule a ride?
We're getting that, it does, that did surprise me a lot because I asked that question again today, knowing I was coming here tonight. We have not gotten a ton of, of disabled people calling us.
Is it for the paratransit service that's also through the Hope Network though, but not, but not this semi-fixed route?
Well, what we're doing is all the money, if you remember, all the money that's raised from the route goes into a separate fund to fund transporting the disabled.
In Cascade Township?
Yes, only in Cascade Township. That, that goes straight into the Cascade Fund. It doesn't fund anything else. But we have not gotten a lot of calls on that. We've gotten some. We've gotten one that, you know, there is a, a disabled student that goes to Grand Valley. We just upgraded our phone system and none of that ever goes right. And I actually had, somehow her mom got my number and wasn't the happiest, but we had a very good conversation. She was very nice to me. We'd had a couple of bumps with her, but we got that straightened out. We got her schedule all figured out through the end of December. I, it's a long-winded answer to your short question.
Well, there was a lot of people, quite a few people, not a lot, from a Gaylord House when we lost the Rapid that talked about needing bus service. So I was curious if they were using it now. If you say no.
It doesn't sound like it. Like I said, it's, I expected to get a lot more than what we have gotten. And I think you guys did a great job. The media did a great job of getting the phone numbers out there for people to call and to reach out to and that we were the people to call. So even if they call the wrong area at Hope, they would get them to the, to the right area. I don't have the, the RideLink data, you know, that's for anyone over 60. So we, we could be transporting a whole bunch of people through RideLink. I'm not sure about that part.
Alright, thank you.
The issue with Gaylord House residents who were upset, it wasn't that they didn't have the service. It was that the service that they're offered for $2 is available during the regular business hours. Their, their complaint that they were very vocal about is only that it's not available evenings and weekends. And the township doesn't have the capacity to offer that service. We don't provide transportation. We hire that transportation and it's unaffordable. Can't, there's no mechanism for us to provide that. So that's the issue with the Gaylord House, not anything as far as like general transportation.
I do remember that now and, and I remember one of the things that Ted had said because they were, they were very concerned about not, about the weekends. And that's when Ted had said, I'm retired. I can get all my stuff done during the week. So I don't know if that's what they've done.
And there were a few comments, I think trustee Kessel, your wife on our Facebook page, concerned about D and W, but you contacted D and W, right? About when we set up the routes, the stops, they didn't have anybody. So we contacted them multiple times and they didn't.
And they had Ted, I think there was like one person and that is another benefit.
Something else.
If we, if we were to add that Cascade Township, or sorry, Cascade, I told you I never get the name right. The Cascade Center stop, that's really not very far from D and W at all. One of the other things I was going to say that, that I forgot, I just recently found this out like last week and it made the hair on the back of my neck stand up. We have a really, really great driver named RG who does the morning. He's a fantastic guy. He, he insists, he wears a mask all the time, but he insists on wearing it as a chin diaper. So it doesn't really do anything, but he's a super nice guy. He, of his own volition, without asking or really telling anybody, kind of made his own stop. We've still got it within an hour. It didn't, it didn't knock us out of the hour, but he's stopping it on Craft.
At the Best Western.
At the Best Western and there's a Panera Bread there, I think. And I said to the operations manager, I'm like, he can't do that. I mean, it hasn't hurt us. So I didn't, I haven't told him to stop, but.
You can tell in September, he was stopping at Craft at the street corner, it sounds like.
And the reason.
Like, it looks like in September or October, he, which I get, like if it's within his route and he, it looks like he has a consistent rider that works maybe at the Best Western.
He's got such a big heart. The whole reason he did is he didn't want him to walk across 28th Street.
Right.
And so I, you know, we're, like I said, we're, we're looking at what this looks like because we need to keep it under that hour. And you know, I'm going to dig a little more into that because I'm like, you know, Cascade Township is our customer. We can't just make up our own stops without talking about them first. But like I said, it didn't, didn't go over the hour. It didn't really put anybody out. So it's, I haven't told him to stop because he does have to seem as a couple of regular riders.
Right. You could see it on the thing. I have a couple of questions for you. What's the total in amount of money that's been collected then for the month of September and then the month of October so far for ridership?
That's a really good question and I'm really bad at math and I don't have that off the top.
Wait, it's $3 per ride?
It's $3.
One way or two, because this.
Each way.
Okay. So each, so the total ridership is probably.
Seven times three.
Yeah.
Would be what, would it be 107 times three?
Okay.
Because we've had.
And that's for both months, year up to the 12th?
Oh, no, wait, that's not right. That's just for the last three weeks.
So that was.
Sorry, you caught me off guard with a money question.
No, we can figure it out.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be easier if we could have the total, just that we know how much. And then the township's putting in 19 something a month. Is that right?
The DDA, yep.
The DDA is putting in around 19,000.
So the ridership, it's, it's one on is one, one person and one off.
One way.
One way. Got it. So the majority of riders are probably actual ridership is probably about half of the number.
Yes, that's a good point.
How you keep it up?
Unless they're, you know, unless they're going to Meyer and mom's picking them up or, or something like that. They're going to work.
It's a total of 13 routes per day, like 13 runs or whatever.
Yeah, we run every hour from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM and then from 1:00 PM, we stop at.
But you don't at 10 o'clock, right?
We don't, we don't pick up at 10.
So it's six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, one, two, three, four. And then from what times at night?
Seven to 10.
So then.
And that's, that's one of the things that.
So yeah, that's 13, 13 roundabouts a day. I was just trying to figure out if, just calculating quickly, if we knew the totals, we'd be able to know how many riders out of the total amount of time, just to know. But like you said, I mean, we can manually pull that, I guess, from this information as well.
If there's data that you would like us to provide, just send me an email and, and I can get with people smarter than I am and and we can provide you with some more data. I do believe my boss said this morning that it's been less than what we had originally anticipated. So I don't think we're overspending.
In the right, yeah, okay. And the riders probably know, or the drivers probably know how many people they actually have riding.
And that's where.
It looks like it's pretty consistent with where they're picking, they're obviously picking up in the morning at the flagpoles, 99%. In the afternoon, they're dropping off flagpoles 99% of the time. So they're picking riders up from the old art van, driving them to work, picking them up in the afternoon, taking them back to the old art van to drop them off. It's that part you can see very clearly from the data. I was just trying to get an idea of how, if, how many people or how many rides there actually was during this time by the amount that we had collected. And also to know how much money we would have each month to fund the other phase of this too, that we talked about.
Yeah. And again, I, I apologize for not having that information in front of me and.
Yeah, I should have given you a heads up ahead of time.
No, you've got a last minute request. So we just appreciate it.
It's.
I just wrote these notes when I was sitting here, so.
If you want to send me an email and, and would like to see some more data, I'm, I'm sure that we could provide that on an, on an ongoing basis.
Just so the public, most people are aware probably about the flagpoles, the old art van, it's Kentwood, but Cascade Township pays to go over there, start there and finish there because that's the last drop off for the Rapids.
Correct.
And one more thing, just observation, looking at this, I just want to, and again, I know you're not driving the bus, but it appears that 95% or more of these riders are coming from the Kentwood drive, coming into the township via this bus and working either at Walmart, Meyer. There's just a couple goodwill. It's not very consistent with the goodwill. It doesn't look like, or the Best Western that we talked about. Is that right?
Yeah. And, and again, I I can't differentiate between employees and shoppers. And that's one of the things where, you know, my boss or operations manager and we're really looking at it because we're a little bit nervous about like Costco and Aldi's with the holidays coming, that's just a real wild card. We just, we just, we're just not, we're not sure. And, and one of the things is that, you know, I'm making a guess that, well, not a guess, but Target and Meyer and Walmart and some of these other places are going to start hiring, if they haven't already, a lot of Christmas help. And they'll probably be working a lot on the weekends. So I have a sneaky suspicion we might start getting calls as to, you know, I can't get to work on the weekend or, or whatever, but.
Right. And then the, the, the businesses you've spoke to, your informal proposal is to drop the Y and to drive, come down, how far down 28th Street?
Just to that, Cascade Center.
Which is?
The, the Subway would be the furthest.
Okay, that's.
But we're not, I just wanted to make, that's why I brought it up before, is that we're not going to like stop in front of Subway.
Right.
I want to find something in the middle so that we can get AutoZone, so we can get Freddie, Freddy's, Taco Bell and, and some of those other places in there. And, and you know, I tried, there's like some nail places and some different things like that, that's in there. And there was some, a couple of restaurants that were closed. So I couldn't, I couldn't talk to them, but I just think that there's a good chance, well, we're getting, okay, now I got one for the last week, but the fact that we're not getting any riders at the Y, if we got five riders from the, the other stop, we would be gaining riders.
And that's so close to the D and W. So right now there is not a need, we checked, trustee Kessel, but if we did have the ability, I mean, it wouldn't be hard to add that if there were a need.
Yeah. I mean, I think they could just go down a little bit and I think there's a crosswalk, not too terribly far and they could, they could get over to D and W. And then that's a, that's a whole nother strip mall if, if, you know, the word got out that, you know, we were coming down there that we could pick up riders there too.
Totally.
But again, I, I want to make sure the logistics, because we, the first time we've looked at it, even when we dropped the Y, it was over an hour. So that's why we got to look at some things which to, to keep that, to keep that under an hour. And I think we can. We've just got to look at it and, and figure it out.
Since it appears as though the residents and taxpayers of Cascade are drastically affected by the modification or changing of the stops, I would suggest that the Hope Network work with the township manager and come up with a plan that's an immutable, that's not going to cost the township anymore and it's not going to affect the dishabilited residents of the township.
And it, and it would not at all, for sure. And that would be, that was my plan, was to work that at once I know I can do these things.
And we were expecting tweaks. This is like the three, four month trial period.
And I'm.
We chose you because you're flexible.
I'm hoping to to really get this nailed down as quickly as I can so that, so that we can get this one ready for, for Christmas. And we're almost, it went really fast. We're two months into the four months already. So I don't, I don't want to wait till the middle of December to try it. I want to make sure that we get a good, a good idea.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Thank you so much.
No problem. And.
Manager Smith isn't here tonight, but he's looking at, we have time, if the, if there's formal board action required to, to amend the schedule, the route. We don't think there is, but if there is, we, we have a meeting next week or we'll amend it at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
But in the meantime, the two of you can figure it out.
And, and again, send me an email if there's more data that you'd like to start getting and I'll get with the smart people and, and.
The big thing I, I think that would be the easy thing, which again, it's hard because none of the information, the way we get it isn't, isn't in Excel form. So we can't just quick add, you know, add things up or at all, but it would be nice just to know how much a month right now for the last couple of months that has been.
Spent.
Yes, that we, well, that you have collected from riders. Yes, just for us to be able to know how much would be in a, a pot for the other transportation. And then we could quickly figure out how many riders that we have had because it does look like everybody but one has paid this whole time. So.
And I do have to say that it, it, it took us a little bit to get this up and going and to make sure the rider, the drivers were doing it. So I don't know how much info we'd have, we'll have for September. Because I'm trying to remember when we started saying from when it went to a suggestion to our drivers to, you really need to make sure that you're doing it. There was a little inconsistency when it first started, but now they're getting pretty good at making sure they're, they're keeping track of everything.
Before you actually started service and it was more around when the Rapid negotiations were going on and coming to an end, lots of people are not afraid to complain. We had a lot of complaints, mostly from people outside the township, but they contacted us. And ever since Hope Network's been up and running, I haven't received one. And Manager Smith hasn't either. We were the two that were getting them. So.
That's good to hear.
Other than Gaylord House, because they want evenings and weekends, which we just can't do. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And like I said, if you need anything at all, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a good night.
Article five, public comments. Now is the time for the public to come on a, comment on anything on tonight's agenda that is not scheduled for a public hearing. That would be the Hope Network Services, also different services contracts for the creation of Friendship Park, the outdoor space around the library. We have a policy on parks benches and also an appointment to the PFAS committee. Comments that are outside of those, the scope of those topics are reserved for the end of the meeting. Welcome, Mr. Carey.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Kenneth Carey, 2929 Thornhill River Drive. I, I think I have to thank Walter here for the traffic situation because it's made a noticeable difference. The shoulders have been filled. They haven't been compacted, but it, it looks like the road commission got on board on that. And it must've been, because if you guys didn't do anything, he did.
We did, but I'm sure it was Walter not up.
Yeah, I think they got multiple, but, and I'll tell you something that everybody on the panel here is judged every day on the road conditions in the, in the in our township. And you know, you've got some really bad spots on Thorn Hills right here. That's following right by Sentinel Point. The road commission's been working a lot. It's patched. And, you know, it's one thing Jimmy's are told me about East Grand Rapids. He says, it's a great place. He says, but you don't want to live there. The roads are horrendous through the, the neighborhoods and stuff. And their taxes are 50% higher than they are here. So everybody on the panel here is judged every day by people driving on the roads. And I think that had we got on this truck situation earlier, that our roads in the township would be in a lot better shape right now. So anyway, I just wanted to make the comment that I'm not noticing the trucks. And I was, of course, the weather's starting to get cooler too. And when you're outside, you notice it more, but I, I think the traffic situation has improved greatly. And they have addressed some issues on Thornhill River Drive. So I'm happy to see that. I, I think the traffic situation has improved greatly, and they have addressed some issues on Thornup River Drive, so I'm happy to see that.
Thank you. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, Mr. Carey, that wasn't on the agenda.
Well.
I'm disheasing you, it's my fault, but we appreciate it. Sorry.
Well, I would've talked about it later.
You're done. No, I apologize, sorry to the board, I just did, I missed it. Good evening, Mr. Van Solkema.
Hello, uh, just, I don't know if you guys know, but the view is stuck here, it doesn't switch to you guys on the Zoom and YouTube recordings, but just FYI, um, I'm here about the benches, I went to the parks meeting and spoke about that. Uh, five thousand dollars is kind of a lot of money for a lot of people, it may not be accessible. I was just curious if there may be possibly another avenue, I mean, I know there's already quite a few benches in, in the township around the parks or what have you, maybe there's like and we can also institute maybe an adopt a bench program where somebody can still add a memorial plaque to a bench. Maybe, you know, rehab something along those lines, or, you know, obviously, I, I understand that the five hundred dollar from twenty-eleven isn't working, it's not covering the cost of the bench and the installation and all that, which makes sense. Obviously, township shouldn't lose money on this deal at all if we're getting a memorial bench, and the township is actually paying less or paying more money than the donation, so, which doesn't make sense, but um if there's any way, again, the, you know, because people do wanna memorialize people, obviously, there's a lot of bricks down at um at Tassel Park, there's bricks in front of the uh, uh, the old Township Hall, things of that nature. Um, just something to think about where maybe you can still, you know, pay for a bronze plaque to go onto a bench that's already existing, and then obviously, the donation person would pay for the plaque, but then also an additional donation towards the parks funds. Just something that, so people can be more inclusive, I mean, five thousand dollars is, is a lot of money for a lot of people. Now granted, I'm assuming most of you guys have been to Ada Park where I think they have an overabundance of benches in, in a certain area where like the little trails are right by the pickup, pickleballs, I didn't part, I didn't uh, count them, but I believe there's probably close to probably two dozen to three dozen benches in a very, very small area, so obviously, we don't want that to happen, but again, we have, you know, the paths, all the bike, or all the bike paths, all the parks that we have, so there is ample room to spread them out, so just something else to consider, I don't know, maybe that'd be down the line if people wanted to do that, so that was my two cents, so, thank you.
Thank you. No one? Okay, moving on to approval of the consent agenda, is there a discussion or a motion?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstanz to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, discussion or a motion?
Discussion. It looks like we have better accountability of the bills, and uh, looks like all the bills that were presented for payment and the financial statement are pretty nice and clean. And so with that, I make a motion to uh pay the uh, accept a financial statement and pay the invoices as requested.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the financial actions, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Having no unfinished business, business, article nine, new business. We have three items that are all related to Friendship Park this evening. Before we get into the details, this project is made possible by a recent grant that Director Mannion helped the township secure. Um, a state grant related to the RAP, R E P program, as well as contributions from the Friends of the Library from all of the book sales over the years, as well as the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA. Um, assuming these contracts are approved this evening, we anticipate a start date of November next month and a June twenty twenty-four completion date. So with that, Director Mannion, would you please walk us through?
Absolutely, um, thank you again for allowing me to come out and present these to you tonight. As you remember, last month, we um brought before you the contract for the construction company to start the construction. Um, in that, we discovered that we actually um still need to approve some of the other contractors that um we are going to be needing to utilize. And uh, the first one is um the contract for the Design Forum. Um, that is for the actual architectural design and engineering of the, cuz the, um, the pavilion. If we remember, the initial designs were not something that was really unique, that would be a character of Cascade, and we wanted something that would be um special to our, our township. And therefore, we um our original native edge contractor recommended this company, Design Forum, to help us develop something and then also engineer it. So uh, if you look, you may notice that their actual cost is twenty-six thousand dollars with five hundred dollars per site visit, and so we are recommending having this go, the contract be for thirty thousand, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, we do not anticipate that it will be thirty thousand dollars. They are actually only looking at two to three site visits, but we wanted to have upwards of eight site visits, just in case there are issues. And that's why it's uh thirty thousand, not to exceed. I don't, do you want me to do all three of them at once, or do you want me just to do that one and then the other two?
I'd say do them separately, 'cause I have a question. Oh, okay, how about separate?
Okay, any questions on that one?
Yes, I have a question. So who is sitting down with Design Forum and talking them through what Cascade wants this pavilion to look like?
Excellent question. So um originally, you may know, this was um started by the library. So uh, it was then um after, I don't actually know her name, transitioned to Lulu, so.
Vanessa.
Yes, Vanessa, thank you, I never met Vanessa. Uh, so manager uh Lulu or manager Brown actually has been um spearheading this, and then if, do you remember at our last meeting, we transitioned that over to the township for this very reason, to make sure that all the contracts and everything is lined up with us, since we are the ones that are going to be responsible for paying um, the con, the contractors. Um, so Lulu will continue to be part of this because she had, or I'm sorry, Miss Brown will continue to be part of this. Obviously Supervisor Losbrows will be a big part of this, um, she has a great vision for what this could be for our community. And then also um our manager, Smith, and then also myself will be in this. We do involve other staff members, specifically our building as a ground supervisor to help, you know, with long-term maintenance, et cetera, so they will have, but those are the four deciding.
Thank you.
Red brick. Essentially, the real, yes, the red brick.
Yes. Matches the library.
Exactly.
Wanted to look like out of place, like, oh, look, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, they put up a pavilion.
Right, it needs to fit.
So the twenty twenty-three pavilion is the Ada Pavilion?
Yeah.
Say what you want about it, it's a kit, well, maybe not that, but it's a kit, and that was the proposed for us. So one is trendy and two, we literally, it'd be an Ada knockoff.
Right, and we, we, yeah, we need something to fit.
We don't. I will say, um, based on some things that I've already heard, I believe that the one we will have will be one of a kind. It will be unique, it will be special, and it will blend in with the rest of the park.
Classy, timeless, but also unique.
And sustainable.
Code words for what's to come. Sorry, trustee Shipley, if you wanted on the design too.
No, I have no, I have no design abilities. Um, just to, to clarify for general public's information.
Yes.
The funding for this park is already covered without taking money out of the general fund?
Hundred percent.
Without raising millage?
Yes.
And it was through the generosity of several groups, including Friends of the Library and the DDA, all kicked in and said, we want to improve this area for the township.
Absolutely, and I will state, um, the budget that you have seen numerous times in the past. Um, at this point, the, currently, the native edge who has been overseeing much of the project has stayed very much within that budget. Having said that, if for some reason the design that we choose supersedes what he had expected when he created that budget, I guarantee I will personally be out looking for additional private donations to cover that cost, to make it that one-of-a-kind prop, you know, pavilion, that, so that it does not have to come from taxpayer money.
I would expect that probably would never happen, but uh, it's nice that you have uh integrity that you're saying, hey, I'll, I'll jump in here, so. With that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the uh, contract with Design Forum Incorporated, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Support.
Any further discussion? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to um approve the contract with Design Forum Inc. for architectural and engineering services for the pavilion at Friendship Park, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item zero eight eight, twenty twenty-three, this is for approval of the contract with Native Edge for phases two through four of Friendship Park. Ms. Mannion?
Yes, so um, again, one of the things that we've discovered is that through this process, um, things have morphed, originally started out as a very small park with phase one. This was what was um, was committed to by the Friends of the Library. And, but since then, it was brought to the DDA and the RAP grant, all then um evolved us beyond the phase one into the complete four-phase project that it is today. Um, we unfortunately only have a contract for phase one. So what we're looking for is to um fund services through, to Native Edge for the phases three through four. So this is for um helping with the uh, not only the construction documents, the landscape planned, um overseeing the construction to make sure the plans are being implemented correctly. Um, all again, within that original budget that you've all looked at and approved. So this is, nothing is new, it's just, these are things that um we want to make sure that we capture in a contract moving forward.
Another comment, some of us were watching with aided breath, watching to see where we were gonna be socking the residents with additional money because it came down as phase one. So this clarifies where the money is being spent, much to the chagrin of myself and uh other taxpayers. Uh, once again, fully funded, we're just breaking it up and justifying where the dollars are going that have been generously donated. So with that, once again, I make a motion that we approve uh, contract with Native Edge for phases two through four. Not to exceed thirty-six thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars.
Support.
Further discussion? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, for the motion as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item zero eight nine, twenty twenty-three, this is the contract with Native Edge for landscape installation of trees, shrubs, perennials, same park, not to exceed a hundred eighty-four thousand, fifty dollars.
I do wanna go back one thing, I forgot to mention, we have already received the check from the Friends, so.
Oh, good, did we deposit it, did it clear?
We did receive that this week, so we are very grateful for it. Um, okay, so this is the last one. Um, again, last week, the contract that we brought before you was for the construction part of the actual um hard features, so those are the pavers, the tables, you know, the, the actual infrastructure behind the park. This is for the actual landscaping, so these are the trees, the shrubs, the native meadow, um, all of the living things that are going into the park. Um, and because the contractor we selected was selected for their ecologically based designs, this is their specialty, we, and we want to make sure that they get this contract so they can implement their designs. And again, it's not to exceed a hundred eighty-four thousand and fifty dollars, but that is including not just their expertise, but all of the materials as well.
I, I know I'd asked this question last week or made a comment on it, so I'll ask the question this week, what about maintenance years forward? Cuz I know that was one of the things that we talked about originally with the native plants, that we need somebody that knows what they're doing the first couple of years.
Yes.
To make sure they're maintaining them.
Yes, and this exactly is part of this, this is including that maintenance. Um, it is, so their intent is to maintain for the first two years
Okay.
under their supervision.
Okay.
And then um, and then at that point, the native plants are really minimal maintenance. The first two years are very intense, but after a year, three and beyond, it's very minimal.
So that's included in that?
Yes.
And then, is there any kind of guarantee from any of the plants that we're purchasing from them, so if they get planted in late spring and by fall, something's dead, do they do any kind of guarantee on any of their plants that they're doing, do you know?
You know, that is a.
I didn't see it as a blind item, I'm just, you know, if I went to fruit basket and bought a tree, they give me a year.
Well, I will just state, um, it's a fantastic question. But as a person who does native landscaping, that is extremely uncommon.
Okay, I'm just, and it's not so much the plants, I guess I'm worried about, but the trees and shrubs and those bigger items, it is more of what I'm concerned with, that in a year from now, we'll have another several thousand dollars, something were to happen, we have a drought next year or something like that.
Yes, I will say, I, even the native trees and shrubs are very hardy, and they are capable of withstanding a lot. Um, you do need to get them established, but I, I know, I believe in Wes that he would not allow that to happen. But I can definitely make sure we bring it up.
Than you to make sure too, that you're making sure people are taking care of things versus than me planting something and leaving it, no, but in the past, I think we have, we have planted some things and just left them to grow or do whatever.
Right.
And I know you're managing that a lot better, so.
And I, and again, it's a very different world when you use native plants. If I first landscaped, um, I planted hundreds of individual native plants, and I only lost one. It, it's, it's, that's why we like to use them, they're cost effective.
Thank you.
There is actually a paragraph in this contract that says they cannot guarantee the plants.
What's it titled then?
Native.
What's the blow print on it? What's the bold heading?
It's under certification, Native Edge shall not be required to sign documents, no matter by who requested, that would result in Native Edge having to certify, guarantee, or warrant the existence of conditions or the suitability or performance of Native Edge services or the project that would require knowledge, services, or responsibilities beyond the scope of that disagreement.
Yeah.
So.
I, I, I think that those disclaimers are probably pretty common in most businesses, but the fact that they're going to maintain it for two years, I think that would be a, probably an arguable point that, hey, these things died while you're supposed to be maintaining them. So, that would be a concern of mine, but the two-year maintenance agreement, uh, that's more comforting.
Right, and and I think of the maintenance more towards the native plants, and again, I think my concern was the trees, they're they're not gonna become trimming trees and watering them for us, that's gonna be our responsibility.
Right, and I believe, and I'm, I'm not exactly positive, but most of this will be also irrigated, which will also assist with that as well.
Well, I move to approve the contract with Native Edge, as we've discussed, at a fee not to exceed one hundred eighty-four thousand, fifty dollars.
Shipley supports.
A motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve item zero nine zero, twenty twenty-three. Oh, zero eight nine, twenty twenty-three, the contract for Native Edge for the landscape installation, not to exceed a hundred eighty-four thousand, fifty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item zero nine zero, twenty twenty-three. Resolution to establish a commemorative bench donation policy. Um, there's been interest in commemorative bench donations in the past, we've done them. This is a formal policy that could provide an opportunity for residents to tangibly participate in the placemaking initiatives, and also um, it really just kind of is. it really just kind of establishes an objective and streamlined process that we haven't had in the past. So with that, Director Mannion?
Yeah.
Please justify the five thousand dollars.
I will definitely. Well, I hopefully will. Um, so this is brought to you actually by, again, the Parks Committee. This is a recommendation by the Parks Committee that started uh long before I started as the Parks Director. Um, they recognized uh, two things. One, that the five hundred dollars that was currently on our um bench policy uh the you know, that we were receiving was completely inadequate for what the bench cost, the installation and the maintenance. Um, and two, that we had dedicated within our master plan and also the strategic plan to start looking for other sources of revenue to support the park system besides a millage and besides our, you know, our general fund. So this is a way for us to capture the excitement within our parks. Um, in a in a way that other organizations do, like other parks departments, land conservancies and other similar organizations. We, the Parks Committee did an excellent job of researching other parks departments and land conservancies to determine what is a reasonable amount. Um, I myself am not a wealthy person, and when they came back with five dollars, I'll admit, I was a little surprised. Um, having said that, their justification, again, comparing it to other locations that were less affluent than Cascade um, and using it as a way to capture um an additional revenue source for the Parks Department made sense to me. And and therefore, in the end, I was actually very supportive of that. Um, I will say the uh Personnel and Finance Committee made an excellent suggestion of making an option for veterans to have it at twenty five hundred dollars. So there is an option for those that have served our country to have a reduced cost, which I think was a very um, smart and wise uh addition to it. Um, but I do believe, um, my last thing about this is, you know, and we we Ottawa County Parks, where I came from, we were at a point very similar to here where we were running out of good places to put benches. You just can't put benches everywhere. You may think that you can take all the benches in the world, but there really are only so many places you can put benches. And um Peace Park is almost at that point. So we're getting to the point where and and also Burton Park we're getting. And so we we're at a supply and demand situation where basically the demand is high. We have many people call us, some of them willing to pay whatever for a bench each year. And really, the locations, the supply or the um, the supply is low. What we actually need is really low. So this is where this is is five hundred to five thousand is a big jump, and I can understand if that is uncomfortable. But um, this is coming from the Parks Committee, and I do believe it is a good funding source.
What's, can you break down the cost analysis of like actual cost?
Yeah. Um, so.
Compared to what we do now, what its costs us, that kind of stuff.
We are going to do a change um in the design, but even the current bench that we have, which is not extremely attractive, in my opinion. We're going to go to a different design that I believe is more attractive and also um goes into the ground right now. It just settles on the ground. So these will be, they cost a little bit more, but they'll be cemented into the ground, so they can't be moved, which I I believe is uh wiser. Um, those are around twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. Um, because they are made out of recycled um plastic. And again, they're a little bit nicer than the ones we have today. That does not include shipping. That's just the bench. So then you have the shipping on top of that. Then you have the installation of that bench with our staff, which um can require equipment and other things to go out there. And then we have, depending on the location, the maintenance of it. You know, we are going to maintain things. So power washing, you know, inspecting them on a regular basis. If we need to weed whipping, those are all things that um you know, go into taking care of this. And as you notice, the first ten years are within this uh donation policy. If something happens within that time, if if after that point, if something happens, we can go back to the donor and ask them if they would like to replace the bench. Um, so we were estimating probably around two thousand to twenty five hundred dollars is really what a bench cost. And if you've ever been in retail, markup is usually, right, fifty percent?
I asked Melanie earlier uh today, and I didn't get her response before I left work, but we talked a little bit before the meeting. Uh, the one thing that the policy doesn't address, and I asked about this afternoon, was do residents, uh, are we going to limit this to residents of Cascade or former residents who want to donate a bench in somebody's honor? I think the answer was we would take donations from anywhere.
We'll take money from anybody.
That was my recommendation. Um, there is a recent example of someone that was a Cascade resident that passed away recently. And their friends, I believe from college, uh, came to the funeral and donated. They are not from Cascade and they donated a bench in his honor. So that would be an example of a person from outside, you know, donating in honor of someone. Again, he's a Cascade resident, but again, money is money. Um, yes.
Typically, the people that want to do that have some connection.
Yes.
Someone they want to remember who lived here, even if they did not.
Yes.
That sort of thing. Cemeteries, how are we doing there?
As far as benches?
We can't have benches there.
Oh.
There's no room. Graves go right up to the driveways, and it's actually not allowed in our policy as a as a gravestone bench.
Thank you for saying that. Someone asked me the other day, and I said, I don't know.
Got a couple of comments or questions. First of all, you had mentioned that we have a limited number of spaces where we can logically place benches. Why would we allow somebody other than a former resident to be honored with a bench? Say, just out of the wild blue sky, the Myers family wants to donate a couple benches in name of Frederick Myers. Fantastic family. I'm not dissing them at all, but he was never a Cascade resident. Why would he be selected over somebody, let's say, um, uh, Jack Lewis, who was a township trustee and a resident for all of his life here? Why would we select outsider versus somebody that was truly a resident?
Good point.
I'd like some clarification in this resolution that the person does have to have ties to the to the township, either in service to the township or resident to the township.
Okay.
Instead of giving them equal billing with a wonderful person that might live in Grand Haven or never even lived here.
What if it's a resident, but he wasn't very likable?
We're not talking about you.
Okay, so then another thing, point of clarification, Westdale Memorial Park.
Yep.
There's a lot of pushback because overwhelmingly loved, well-known in the community. But technically, a resident briefly in his at some time, but it had been quite a while. And there were certain trustees who really were opposed to that memorial name. And the guy won the Congressional Medal of Medal of Honor. He was a Japanese American who was demoted during the World War Two, like highest decorate, high, most highest decorated veteran. So if you textbook classic hero, right? But the argument was made by three and a half trustees.
Well.
That turned to, you know.
The the matter is, we're not defining whether he was a resident here for two years or for twenty years.
He was never a resident.
So say that then under that rationale, okay, we don't have a huge need for benches, but we sure have a huge need for green space, you know, all different types of things. So say a non-resident wants to make a donation to this township, but not for a bench, just because it's it's a supply and demand, but we we have unfortunately, nothing set aside uh for property acquisition. But we have a rapidly growing township, developers who are chomping at the bit. The airport wants an on-off ramp. You know, everything. So if there's a non-resident who wants to donate a parcel of property for a loved one or a deceased pet, and he doesn't live there, I personally would hate to set a precedent where we're turning down, um, you know, it may not be for a bench.
Well, I think this resolution is just for benches.
I'm just saying, if you're going to accept that logic, this is just benches, but money is money.
Hmm. Yeah, but we had a different policy in Burton Park, right, for naming rights of trails. That's different than this.
I don't, we had a lack of policies.
And.
We do have that.
So I don't think that that request is unusual. I mean, I didn't think of the Meyer family, but if there's a limited space, the space ought to be given to a resident or at least one who lived here before it is given to a non-resident. I think if if you've got the money, one person's going to donate it over the other. We ought to take the residence money first.
Right. I just, it's funny because I haven't had a problem yet of like us having to turn down, you know, philanthropic. If anything, we don't have anything established, but.
How how many requests do you know? I know you've only been here a short time, but do you have any idea how many requests a year we get? You're smiling like you already have this answer.
No, I'm smiling because our most recent bench has been in the queue for four years without getting response. Um, she's very happy that she now has her bench.
Thank you for talking to so many residents.
So, um, but I I would say probably two a year.
Okay.
In a year, I think originally when the five hundred dollars was created, I think it might have been about the time Burton Park was open and there was all this in Peace Park, and there was all this need for benches. And we have since then, you know, received about two a year. So we 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 have a decent amount of benches.
So regarding the bench policy, John, are you kind of, you're kind of implying there should be some connection to Cascade, whether the the donors are from Cascade or the the memorial, the person themselves, just some connection?
Yeah, I I I really don't care where the money comes from, but I think that it's more significant that on Cascade Township property, a park or whatever, that the limited amount of space that we have available, sounds like, should be if it's a flip of the coin, it should be a double-headed coin and it should go to the residents.
Could we, could we, Melanie, would it make sense to say we could approve this with a a final condition being that the final approval is made by the Parks Committee?
Approved.
To prove, to approve the request. There each request that the that each request is need the final approval from the Parks Committee.
No, you don't give it. And not because it's a bad idea, because you don't do that. We're the Board of Trustees. They're a an appointed volunteer committee. If anything, you give it to the township manager.
And that is in here in a way, not to say no, but it does say at the discrimination of the board. I think I didn't just read through it, but I read through it at the Personal Finance Committee, and I do think that is the final.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there was some kind of final that the it should, and Grace is right, should be the board.
So you could have like two families in Cascade buy one bench, right? Each family donating twenty five hundred. And you could do it that way, right? You don't have to have just one family buying one bench for five.
Right, exactly. It would be that those two families could come in and buy one bench.
Is it possible that, um, you know, right now we're talking benches? We just really haven't done this in the past, but you know, other communities that are kind of farther along in their parks and and private public partnerships, we can get beyond benches, but maybe, you know, to other projects, parks, spaces.
Um, to speak what they were saying earlier, we do have a naming policy.
Yes, like, yeah, we, and it allows, there's, it's very well-written as far as
Right.
legal room.
But I definitely believe that, for example, our pavilion, we might, you know, we even at Tassel, right, we have their name on many different structures because of the amount of money that they've contributed to there. So yes, I do believe we should um, involve a lot more private donors in our park system to help us. Um, the way I like to see it is, you know, you have your millages and your, you know, your your tax base helps you with the bare minimum of your parks. But if you want extra things or to make it that extra level, you know, that's especially when it's important to bring in private donors.
We don't have the tax base to do
Right.
what some people expect or what similar communities have aid. You know, there's, that's private philanthropy. But thank you. You're doing the most important job of establishing and, you know, repairing trusts so that the community is open to invest in to these types of projects.
And by the way, looking through the bench policy, it doesn't say approval of the township board. It says exceptions to this policy may be considered at the discretion of the Parks Director or Board of Trustees. It doesn't say anything about a final approval.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I knew there was something in there that said.
Would you like that changed then?
Well, we could put that in resolution if we.
Okay.
If somebody wants to, yeah.
And the the amount to be charged for benches fixed apparently? It's going to be five grand?
In twenty five hundred for veterans.
Or twenty five hundred dollars for veterans. It's in the policy. So I think the only real question we have open and open end is do we want to have a final approval from the board? Or at each request?
I don't think we need to. If we didn't trust Melanie or like her maybe, but I think she's really good, so.
So we could just add a bullet point and say criteria for eligibility to have a bench placed. The donor or the memorialized individual must have ties to Cascade, which gives you some latitude what those ties are. We could just add a bullet point at that point.
Meyer has a store here. And a son who lives here.
Good. If we are going to consider the board having discretionary say, I don't know if that's included now or not. I I'm not unders completely clear on that. Could the board also have discretionary say on the fees or wavering the fees, much like the uh township board has got currently the authority to waiver late fees for property taxes?
That's in here. Exceptions to this policy may be considered.
I have to say, I think from being on the Parks Committee, this is why the queue is four years old, is because for four years they've been talking about making this policy with a set amount so people know, so people can act on this and move forward. And if we put another cog in the wheel where it has to say, oh, I'm going to pay five hundred dollars, and then it comes to the board and we approve that one, and then what, next week we approve a thousand dollars? I don't think that's a good idea. I think the I think the fee amount has to be set in here. It's part of the problem in the past, in the last four years, why we haven't moved forward with any of these.
And just to clarify, it wasn't the park, it was the Parks Committee and Director Mannion who who started, who saw the problem and
but I'm seeing that's why.
Brought up a solution. They did delay.
Cause it, it went to the maintenance, building and grounds, and it just sat, is my understanding, for years because there wasn't anything in stone. Yes.
One of the things you're suggesting changing is that last sentence, excuse me, that says, uh, this policy may be considered at the discretion of the Board of Trustees, right?
It says, Jim says, exceptions to the policy.
Yeah, but if there's going to be any, I heard it say that the Board of Justices should make those exceptions because the Parks Committee is an appointed board rather than elected board.
Just the township in general. I don't think it requires micromanaging, but as far as we have a Parks Director or a manager, and that's the kind of stuff that even if it's controversial, you go to the board. Otherwise, you're just, they they are capable of making those decisions.
Yep. So are we saying, do we really care if it has a tie to Cascade? Do we want to build that into the resolution or do you think it's not important?
I, at the two a year we have, my personal feeling is the two a years, ten thousand dollars, it's a little money towards the park. It pays for the bench and some maintenance. I I think that if we got to a point where you said, you know what, we only have fifty places left for these benches to go, let's do something about this. We need to start being selective.
And we can, you know, we can, we can go back and modify.
Yes, like, I feel like that's a problem. I feel like right now I don't see that there, I feel like we're making an issue that isn't there.
Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve the commemorative bench donation policy in application as presented by our Parks Director.
Support. It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the resolution to establish a commemorative bench donation policy as proposed. Clerks, later, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Nay.
Trustee Kessel.
Nay.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater. Yes, Supervisor Lespernance.
Yes. Motion barely carried. Thank you, Director Mannion.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Last item, zero nine one, twenty twenty-three, consider appointment to the PFAS Citizen Advisory Committee. Uh, again, this is the committee that was created um, to involve residents who are part of, or in the area um, contaminated with PFAS because of the airport, the ongoing airport um, pollution over by Rec Park, Goodwood and Berger. We had um, Mr. John Lippard, who lived in Phase One. He was on the committee. He did a great job, uh, but he recently moved. So there's a vacancy. Now that Phase One is completed, we were hoping to find a, a resident who lives in Phase Two, which is, that, um, it could, is still scheduled on time to begin early in the spring. Uh, Mr. Hudson is generously willing to um, serve on the committee. He's a Realtor uh, in that neighborhood, longtime resident, and I think he's an ideal addition to the committee. So with that, um, any discussion, questions, motions?
I make a motion to approve Ron. He's a good guy and very conscientious. I've known him for years. So I think he'd be a good appointee to the committee. So I'd move, we accept your nomination.
Support. That's a motion by Trustee Kessel, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve Mr. Hudson uh, to the PFAS Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Uh, having no discussion, Article eleven, public comments. Again, this is the time for the public to comment on anything, whether it's on the agenda tonight or not.
Thank you, Rod Schultz, Orange Drive. Forgive me if I have a couple Biden moments. I'm getting older, so if I digress, but.
Oh, sorry, could the clerk, could we get your name for records?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I, I don't want to be considered a terrorist, but I'll give it to you. Rod, R O D, Schultz, S C H U L T Z. Um, you're having that firm come in, that CPA firm, and I think if it's done right, you're gonna get a big return on your investment. But the first thing I'd like to see you do is to get a code of ethics for every employee and every board member. And big companies I've worked for and in my own companies, I've always had a code of ethics. Who you could go to lunch with, what, how much they could spend on you, that kind of stuff. It's very, very important. You also need to back it up with an ordinance. So going from there, come up with something with, there are people like in the state I know who, in Ingham County, I think it was, they fired the IT Director because he went to a ballgame. I think that's going a little far. I think, you know, when you, here's my philosophy. When you fire somebody, it means you haven't done your job because you haven't trained them directly, correctly, right? Yeah. Well, I've dealt with some of your employees here, and if I was here, I would have to fire them, and I would feel bad about it, because I wouldn't sleep the night before, because I never enjoyed firing anybody. But sometimes you have to. Um, I mean, look at Senator Mendez from New Jersey. He's got his problems right now. Um, when you do this to get your metrics to judge every one of your departments and every one of your employees, please put together this code of ethics. Now, who should put that together for you?
Our attorneys.
No, absolutely not. He should review it when it's done. It should be done by somebody who understands it. And that man is sitting right over there. I don't even know him that well, but I've worked with him on a couple of projects, and he knows insides and out and details like nobody I've ever seen. And I know he comes to every meeting, and people like me can get on your nerves, and maybe he gets on your nerves, but I don't look at it that way. I look at where's the most value for my buck? There's a lot to look at when you look at people that have, he has investigative abilities. He has abilities to understand where to find things and go out and things. I'm not looking for anything for me. I'm retired. I got enough to do. I was in Lansing today, and I didn't even want to go, but I had to check on some properties, but whatever, it's not important. Code of Ethics, write a real strong ordinance, but you don't have to take everything, the attorney, attorney should approve everything, and you should have a meeting with it. You don't have to beat it to death. You can go out and get them from some other places, finesse it, that kind of stuff. But you need it. You can't go forward without it. How do you judge somebody? Like if someone's doing business with, I got an LLC or a, a little corporation, I want a couple of those. I could come up if I was on the board and have my company do it and then sub it to somebody else. No, that's not right. And the other thing is lights. There are no lights in this city. I go down Cascade Road. I can't see where I'm going. Can we get some lights? Is there, you have something against lights?
Time is up.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Anyone virtually? Any other comments? Uh, Manager Smith is out tonight. Board member comments, Article thirteen.
So since Jade is not here, you all received an email today about the budget meeting next week. Um, it's the only item on the agenda. We will start at six o'clock instead of seven, and we will post that. Um, and that will, we'll have a regular meeting, but that will be our only item of business will be the budget work session for next week's meeting.
Is that here, sir?
Here. Same everything.
Thanks for coming, folks. I always stand up and thank my bosses for being here. Fill the chairs up. Uh, once again, I'm sorry that we can't satisfy everybody's request. We try to do what's right for the residents of the township, not necessarily outside influences. So, thanks again.
And Mr. Schultz, uh, Manager Smith is gone today, but we can get you more detailed information because some of the there's more information detailed that we do have things implemented, and there have been many things done. So i- if you want some, you know, specifics, we're happy to give that to you.
Yeah, well, appreciate it. And I think you got a wonderful township here.
We're happy to have you.
Happy with it, happy with my neighbors. No, no lights, so I don't.
There's been, we don't have anything against lights. There's been a lot of, um, that's one of our projects that have been, it's like twelve years, kind of hasn't been taken care of, but our engineers on top of it, and um, there's been a lot of progress made as far as ethics, policies, financials, and so we're happy to give you some of those details so that the people who've been working hard on it can get credit for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Can, can I respond to his concerns? Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I talked to our, our newly appointed Director of Parks, and uh, we talked about light situation just, just before the meeting started. And that's been an ongoing issue for twelve years, like you mentioned. Apparently, uh, some of the lights have been changed out to new LED to meet also the limited light uh, pollution. And now, some of the lights are no longer available to have repair parts. So they're, yeah, especially the flickers, yeah. And if you notice, sir, she even went as far as to investigate the lighting in our boardroom here. I'm constantly in the dark, but that's okay. And some of these lights have also been obsolete, and they're looking at trying to find a contractor to replace obsolete lights and also reduce them to LEDs, which lowers the cost. So unfortunately, as technology advances, the availability of repair parts diminishes.
You gotta be careful with the LEDs too, because I used a lot of, and they don't last like they say, that we gotta be careful where you buy them. Go buy the cheapest ones. I'm telling you, could one nice thing about an LED, if you're working properly, you don't have lasers changing them all. Very important to certain resident members.
That's all I have to.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by Trustee McDonald, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, and thanks to everyone for coming.